I'd like to call to order the August 19th, 2021 meeting of Mayor and Council. I'd like to call on Mark Brady with Anchor Faith Church to lead us in prayer, and if you'd all remain standing after that for the pledge. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this time together once again. Father, we just know that in these times of so much happening, not only here locally, even globally, Father, we just thank you that your hand is upon this city and upon these individuals here. I thank you for our mayor and our councilmen and women. Father, we just thank you that you just continue to lead them and guide them as they lead us and lead our city. We just thank you for your hand of protection on our businesses, our schools, universities, Father, all over this community. Thank you that you are just keeping us and protecting us through these times and giving us wisdom to guide and lead as you've called us to, Father. We give you glory, praise, and honor for this today. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, you've had time to look over the minutes from the August 5th regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, seeing none. The minutes are approved by acclamation. We'll move on to item three with public hearings. Consideration of an ordinance to deannex 310 acres. Matt Martin will present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is a request that you tabled two weeks ago. It is a request to deannex 310 acres from the city limits to the county. We covered this in great length two weeks ago, but just to sum it up, this is sort of like an annexation in reverse. The difference is the city council makes the final decision either way. In this particular case, the planning commission meeting had a standing-room-only crowd. Many of those folks were here two weeks ago, and a recommendation from the planning commission is to deny it by a vote of six to three. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. Nothing has changed regarding the aspects of this case in two weeks. We've had no further meaningful contact with the applicant during that time.
Counsel, any questions? Any further questions? All right. There will be no public hearing on this agenda item. That was held at the August 5th city council meeting. And again, I'll turn it over to the council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to deny this request. I think that based on the facts as we understand them, the applicants have the ability to seek approval for hunting on this land while still residing in the city limits. They have the ability to seek to have some burn permits, to deal with some underbrushed issues in connection with the city. So I don't, I think none of the reasons given warrant the deannexation is properly, especially when you consider that there are a host of homeowners that have homes that abut this property, and they are citizens of the city of Valdosta, and they deserve to have their voices heard by their representatives. That is my motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Item four in your agenda, consideration of an ordinance for film production in the city of Valdosta. This is the second reading, and Ashlyn Johnson, who was very involved in this when Bandit was in town.
Yes. Before you, it's the second reading of the film production ordinance, and what this will do is help us facilitate commercial movie productions as well as television productions that shoot here in Valdosta. And we've had a lot of successful films in the past years, but coming off the heels of the Bandit film, we were able to collaborate with them and talk about a process that would work here in our community for permitting, just to address any concerns that our community might have and help them, help the film production maintain their schedule as well. I'll take any questions if you have.
Counsel, any questions? Ashlyn, thank you. Counsel, I'll turn it over to you for action, being that this is the second reading.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve this request as presented.
Second, all in favor, show of hands. Wonderful. Ashlyn, thank you. B, on that agenda item, consideration of an ordinance to establish the 2021 millage rate for the city of Valdosta. Chuck Dinkins, our finance director, will present, and this comes on the heels of the city school board rolling theirs back on Tuesday.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed on the work session, we are recommending the rollback rate. The digest did grow at about 2.66%, which is what we had, we said we usually need about two and a half, and so we were right in there. So the rollback rate as computed should fund the budget. As you can see on the slide above you there, the difference between last year's millage rate of 7.974 and the rollback rate as computed of 7.796 would produce about a $2.50 difference for a $50,000 piece of property that qualified for the homestead exemption. $6 for $100,000, all the way up to about $16.74 for a quarter million dollar piece of property. Again, we do feel that the rollback rate will fund the budget, and so that's what we're recommending for this year. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Chuck that we didn't dive into on Tuesday? Okay, Chuck, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'll turn it over to you for action. We got the most polite counsel ever.
May I make a motion to accept the rollback rate?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Question. Mr. Barber, do we need to phrase that differently since it includes downtown as well as the city school system?
Right. We need to look at it and break it down. The city's school system included that as well as the additional five mills on the downtown area. So if you go back in and look at your...
Get your work out for you, Andy. You got yours, Mark. I can hand him mine.
It's on the screen.
It's on your screen.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is.
May I make a motion to approve the ordinance to adopt the deannex, 7.796, 5.000 bills, and the proper location in central Valdosta development area, and 16.328 bills set by the city's school system.
That's beautiful.
Second.
Eric?
Second.
All in favor, show of hands. Wonderful, counsel. Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Mark. And congratulations, citizens. Item C, consideration of an ordinance to establish the Valdosta Citizens Engagement Board. This is the first reading. Mark Barber, our city manager, will present.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. As Mayor said, this is the first reading of the creation or the addition to an existing Valdosta Citizens Police Engagement Board. It is a first reading because this will be in an ordinance form, and new ordinances require two meetings, and so we'll have another work session and another meeting before any action is taken. So again, first reading tonight, and it's, there'll be no action taken on this agenda item tonight. Thank you.
It was easy.
All right. We'll move on to bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Consideration of bids for two rear loader refuse trucks for the Public Works. Richard Hardy will present. You got pictures too, counsel?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. This is consideration for bids for the two rear loader refuse trucks for the Public Works Department. The funding source is SPOLO State. The residential garbage division needs to replace two 2008 side loader load-all trucks due to their age and their serviceability. You know, basically, these trucks are used to service all of our residential customers throughout the city. Seal bids were received on August the 12th. We had two vendors submit bids. We had a low bid of $559,000. However, it did not meet the required specifications. Solid Waste Supply Technologies meeting all of the specification, we chose them because it's going to meet the needs. It's going to do everything that we require those trucks to do. However, one of the things when we submitted the bids, when we budgeted this, for this equipment back in January, these vehicles, the steel prices was down, and we requested, and was approved through council, $610 for FY '22. However, if we move forward, we can see that the vehicles came in above that. We're requesting, as we move forward, that that $22,782 will move funds around within other Public Works projects throughout the year. Our recommended action is mayor council approved the requested bids and let Public Works Department move forward to purchase these vehicles. Standing by for any questions or concerns.
Counsel, any questions for Richard?
Mr. Hardy, you, 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 how are we paying for this?
This is coming out of SPOLO State.
Coming out of SPOLO State.
Yes, sir.
And counsel, we had already approved $610,000, so he's actually chasing $22,000 and change.
Yes, that is correct.
Correct.
Yes.
I heard right. Any other questions for Richard? Richard, stay put because you've got the next item, but counsel, I'll turn it over to you for action.
So moved, sir.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Richard. Item B, consideration of bids for a front-end loader refuse truck for the Public Works Department. Welcome back.
Yes, thanks. This is for the front-end refuse loader. It handles our commercial customers throughout the city. This is another SPOLO State funding source. We, this vehicle here, it provides the sanitation, as I was stating, for our commercials. It will be replacing a 2004 model in its council-approved budget for fiscal year also. Seal bids were received on August the 12th. We had two companies that provided bids. Performance Peterbilt, they came in with a low bid of $293,765. Several other vendors had the opportunity to submit bids, however, they did not do so. We purchased vehicles like this in the past, and we paid approximately $257,000, and this was about two years ago. And the same thing that goes with the rear end loaders, the steel prices, the cost of vehicles has increased dramatically. When we submitted for budget back in 2021, we requested $270,000, which council approved. However, the cost of this vehicle exceeded that. It exceeded that price by $23,765. And once again, we looked to fund this by moving funds for other later Public Works projects. Today, we, staff recommends that council approve the $293,765 and allow the Public Works Department to move forward with the purchase of this vehicle.
Any questions for Richard on this item?
Mr. Hardy, I'm going to sell plus these and sell them.
Yes, sir. These items right here that are no longer needed, we'll put those out on GovDeals.
So we have enough funding, sir, to supply both of these requests?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
We have enough funding to move around to supply both of these requests, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
May I make a motion that we approve the request as presented?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands, please. Beautiful. Thank you. Item C, consideration of a request to approve a contract for professional services to assist the city of Valdosta with compliance of the Georgia Environmental Protection Division's consent order. David Frost, our brand-new utilities director, will present, and David, congratulations.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Since that memo went out today.
Okay, this is a consideration for a request to approve a contract for professional services to assist the city with EPD compliance order. Back in August 2020, EPD issued 19 conditions in which we had to accomplish within a certain timeframe. That timeframe is August 2025. We've accomplished about 16 of those 19 so far, and we can give a lot of credit for that to a company we contracted with, Barge. They came in, there were certain issues that we had to accomplish that we couldn't, we just couldn't do in-house. We had to contract to them for that service, and that's for developing a hydraulic sewer model, to some putting together an INI action plan, and also for sewer monitoring of our manholes and sewer system. So what we did is, when we contracted with them, it takes us to, it took us through this current timeframe we're at right now with the manhole monitoring and the services. So that contract, it's since expired. So what we're looking to do is renew this, and this will carry us until November 1st, 2021. And what they will do, they'll be including some further services of monitoring, the data analysis, meter maintenance training, and sewer assessment program. We asked for a proposal for that, and they submitted one for, I'm sorry, excuse me, $109,620, and we're asking for approval of that.
Any questions for Dave?
Do you funding come from where? You funding?
User fees.
From utility department?
The utilities department.
I have a question. I was just wondering, okay, this same company, we already contracted them to do part, the part that they've already finished, and we're needing extra work from them or something else more have come up?
Yes, ma'am. No, it's continuing the services. The contract we had with them expired at a certain point, and it's basically what it is. We've got to continue these services for over the next couple of years. So what this is going to do, this will carry us up to the end of November. The contract at the time was just written for a certain time period up to now.
The reason I'm asking is because of the fact that contract expired, which is fine. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Will this extension get us our remaining three items, or is that a longer time?
Well, that's going to be a longer timeframe. That will, this will give us, what this will do, this will take care of the Mud Creek Sewer System Assessment. Then once we complete with that and come in October, you know, before that end, that time period ends, you're going to move those manhole monitors over with the CUCI system, and we'll start that project.
So we're going to come back, and you have to come back again in November?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be coming back before then. What we did is, we, they submitted a proposal to cover us all the way up to the end of December 2022, and basically, that proposal at the time was just over $1.6 million. And that was a little more than what we were expecting, obviously. So I asked them to submit a itemized proposal, and when they did, we identified a few things in there that we could eliminate to cut that cost. So in the meantime, what we want to do is kind of extend this to November so we can look at that, that larger proposal and scale back some of those items, do some negotiating to get that price down.
This is because of the consent order that we are funding. This contract is helping us remain in compliance with our consent order?
Yes, sir.
Isn't this contract part of the consent order?
The consent order is an EPD consent order that was issued to us. Now, we contracted with this contractor to help us satisfy those requirements within the consent order.
So as of November the 1st, if we approve this tonight, November the 1st, you won't be coming for no money unless you become a lower amount rather than this amount?
So probably what we'll be doing is it'll be a higher amount because we want to try to carry this out because with the CUCI, it's a larger system. It's going to take longer to evaluate that system. So what we're going to do is try to, try to stretch that time out so we can cover that whole system within that time period.
Mark Barber?
I just wanted to add that, you know, I have to add a little bit, so just get used to this, David. The real, the bottom line is this with the contract. As David said, we've contracted with Barge to help us with other projects that were not even EPD required. But like David said, there's been some things with hydrology studies and things of that nature that are just out of our range that we can do here with our department. So we need Barge to help us with that. So what's happened is, like this, when the contract expired, they sent another contract in that was about 1.6, 1.7, somewhere in that range. Well, David noticed that it was high, as he said, and when he started going through it, there were things on there like smoke testing. And as you already know, you guys approved us funding for smoke testing over the years. So in order for us to continue and finish the project at Mud Creek, this is what this $109,000 will get us while David negotiates with Barge to come back to you guys with a larger contract through 2022. So it's just enough to keep us on the 109 we just needed to meet our EPD requirements on a timely basis, and he will be back with another contract with Barge once we negotiate a new price.
So you're saying David's earning his keep already?
He's working on it. He's working on it.
So we're going to be paying him two times?
Yeah, just because, and we would not usually do this, but we just felt with EPD consent order, we needed to hit, we've hit every timeline thus far and been ahead of this. We don't want to start now getting behind. So that will just keep us right on schedule with the Mud Creek plant.
But all of this works towards us eliminating sewer spill.
That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right.
That's a good thing.
And one unrelated question, is that, is that skater system in place at the Mud Creek plant yet?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we have, yeah, the skaters installed at all the plants and the collection system at the lift station, so.
Counsel, any further questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, David, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for explaining it to me. I'll be worrying you a lot.
All right.
I look forward to it.
All right, counsel, I'll turn it over to you for action.
Motion that we approve, request as presented.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. All right, David, stay put. Consideration of an agreement for engineering services for construction and replacement of the main switchgear at the Valdosta Water Treatment Plant. How much you want for this one?
Not quite as much as, well, actually, a little more than the last one. But this is, back in June, June 24th meeting, council made, council approved the switchgear replacement project for the water plant. As part of that project, when we were putting it together, we contracted with CDM Smith for the, for the design plans and contract specifications. So with this, the project was awarded to Kirk Industrial Electric. So they were saying the buy ready to go, and with this contract, we're looking for an extended, or not extended, but a new contract with CDM Smith for the engineering services during the construction of the project. The project itself, the switchgear, it's a pretty complex electrical project. So we feel comfortable with CDM coming in. It's, this is how they did the design plans and put the project spec together. They'd be the best, best option for doing the engineering services for us during the project. So we asked for a proposal from CDM, and they submitted one for $177,680. And basically, what that's going to also include is the inspection services behind that, behind the project itself, so.
Counsel, any questions?
We pay this with CDM. We'll be finished with CDM.
For this project, yes, ma'am.
You had a answer.
Oh, you're getting on your feet. You're faking. I threw that ball at you. You hit it. Yeah.
Counsel, any further questions or lessons? David, thank you. Counsel, I'll turn it over to you for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this proposal as submitted.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comment? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. All right. Item E, consideration of bids for Phase Two of the Volantin Park Land Improvement Project. Sir, Matt Collins, our city engineer, will present.
Okay, this is, like the mayor just said, it's Phase Two of the Volantin Park Land Improvements Project. As you remember, earlier this year, we did some clearing out there at Volantin Park, the understory of the existing tree canopy to, for both aesthetic and safety reasons. And what this project will do is it will further thin out the woods so that we got some good usable space there. It will make the place more attractive, safer, that type of thing. And we put out two bids back in July. We got, I'm sorry, we put out a bid and received two bids, one from First Choice Lawn Services and the other from Superior Mulching. And we had two options in there. We had one for burning, and we had one for hauling off to the landfill. You can see how expensive it is to go to the landfill. But anyway, we're asking you tonight to approve the low bid submitted by First Choice Lawn Services for $82,500. We talked to the fire department, and we can't do a burn there, so I'll take any other questions that you might have.
Counsel, questions?
Yeah, they'll burn it on-site. Yeah, there would be fans and things like that that'd be set up and structured, but this is allowed to be done under the thing, under, under the state laws for clearing of trees and brushes. Yeah, but we have, no, we have not met with the local, we have not met with the local residents to inform.
I have one question I asked about that. You say you consulted with the fire department, right?
Correct.
And they did something like what they call a control burn, and they adjusted, and they found out all this is, will be taken care of. It's not going to be causing any kind of problems.
Correct. There'll be certain conditions that we have to meet.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the not to exceed costs submitted by First Choice Lawn in the amount, in the amount of $82,000.
I have a...
$82,500.
I have a motion that I'll hold for a second. Any other questions?
Second, second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. In opposition, six, one. Eric, if you've got any questions, here comes the fire chief. Consideration of request to purchase 17 self-contained breathing apparatus cylinders, four self-contained breathing apparatus, and 10 masks for Georgia Search and Rescue Task Force Two. Our esteemed chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're up here, consideration request to purchase the 17 cylinders for SCBA's and 10 masks. You'll notice that this is a little bit different request than we had earlier for the fire department because this is going to be a replacement to the equipment cache that is going to be only part of the technical rescue assets. These are state assets that are housed in the city of Valdosta. We know the value of having this team here, and so these funds come down from the federal homeland security through GMA and is managed locally through the city of Valdosta to keep those here. We did go with Scott so that we ensure the interoperability, not only with the fire department, but all the other teams across the state of Georgia, and those can be purchased through a state contract. entertain any questions? It is 100% reimbursement through the state, so it's really the state's money and the state's equipment.
Eric's got a question for you. Are you going to be on hand for that controlled burn?
Absolutely.
It's a valid concern.
But the burn is, I mean, the burn is the pit with the blower. That ordinance is already in place, and so it's just utilizing that.
Trying to get rid of the snakes barrier.
Yes, ma'am.
I did see it get a little out of control at that super storage facility that's being built right now, too, so.
So what you're saying, sir, this money for this will not come from the city. It will come from, who'd you say?
Yes, ma'am. So the way that works, and it's technically defined as a grant, but it's an annual grant we get. We've been getting it since 2008, and so we apply. And we, we manage that by identifying the, what part of that equipment cache that we want to replace. Again, this equipment is assigned only to technical rescue assets, so this can be pulled and gone anywhere in the state. It doesn't belong to Valdosta, but it's managed by Valdosta. So they pay for it. We just manage that program.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We're looking for a recommendation to move forward with that purchase.
So moved, sir.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Thank you, chief. Item B on that section, consideration of a request to increase funding for construction of the city of Valdosta Downtown Amphitheater. Mark Barber, our city manager, will present. And this is a common theme with almost any construction project these days, isn't it?
It is. You're correct. Thank you, Mayor. As we discussed in detail Tuesday evening at the workshop, the work session, if you remember right, February 21st, we sent out, we approved a bid to begin our work on the amphitheater park on Lee Street. At that point in time, we were not in the same materials market that we are today when this went out. And if you remember also, this was just...
And if you remember also, this was just a conceptual drawing that we had bid out to give us an idea of what type of funding we would be needing. And it was done free of charge, got to get that plug in, by the UGA students that came down and did a tremendous amount of work for us at no cost. So when we put that concept, the preliminary concepts were bid out, it didn't include a restroom facility nor did it include the fencing around the total perimeter of the, of the proposed amphitheater park. So when we got that back in, it was a total price of, with everything added in, it was one, one million, two sixty three, four sixty. But again, without restrooms and fencing around the perimeters, Teresa just shot up, this is the final conceptual drawing of what the amphitheater itself will look like. As you can see, there's plenty of steel in the building. And that's one of the reasons I'm here with you tonight, as you've heard Mr. Hardy speak of with, with the garbage trucks. Steel prices have increased 215%. And this project can't, the amphitheater can't be built without those steel products that you see there. So with that being said, we met with the contractor last week to look at the, the pricing, the add-ins, like I said, with the fence and the restrooms. And the price that, that's come about is we're looking for approval to get this part finished of an amount not to exceed two million, nine ninety five, nine eighty three. Now, we will, as it goes along, we will try to cut as much as we can. But if you do, I don't think we're going to have the quality of the park that, that, that we've really truly been counting on, our citizens have been waiting for. So again, the combination of pricing and adding the restroom facility that you'll see to your bottom right corner there has up, up the pricing considerably, even with the plywood that we've got to use for some of the ceilings and things like plywood was, the little metal benches were almost tripled just to, that we were going to place along the walking trails. So we're just kind of a victim of the economy right now. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
I got one little question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was looking here where you say there is an additional twenty thousand dollars to be occupied for the future rise of steel prices.
Right.
Now, what if we need some money for something else?
Well, we would just, the city engineer was just trying to be sure we had enough funding in case before they order the steel, if it's approved tonight, if steel prices went up. I just couldn't stand up here and ask you for any more money than for what I just asked you for. So.
What I'm saying is.
I think we're close enough with, with the two million, nine, nine ninety five, ninety three, that I'm not going to ask for the twenty thousand dollars for any more steel increases unless you guys want to do that. But that's what we were doing there.
Okay, I was just saying, rather than stay still just for any other.
Any other, that's.
Things that might come.
That's right. If you want to do that, that's absolutely fine as well.
We want that, but we really want to make sure we kind of.
That's right.
I was looking for a contingency fee, but I didn't see that.
Yeah. Well, we're hoping that will be it. So again, it's, it's difficult to stand before you and ask for, for this type of funding, but I think it's something worth it. Had it not, if it had everything included like we wanted on the first conceptual drawing, it would have been a much closer gap than what it is today.
Where you funding comes from?
The funding is in Splosst eight.
Barge?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And again, we'll continue to look for grants and other things that, that will help us along the way. The only thing that did not increase in price was the splash, the light, the lit up splash pad for the kids. That was seventy two thousand. It's still at seventy two thousand. GMA's got a grant for seventy five, so I'm going to try my hardest to get at least that a hundred percent covered.
Are you planning, are you planning on using any of their funds from this care package?
The rescue plan at the OP Act. From the preliminary readings, I do believe some of this may qualify, especially the restroom facilities, because it's going to have the state of the art, touchless everything in it to prevent further disease spread. So I do believe it will. But again, until we get, we're all waiting on that final ruling so we can see exactly what that has to be. And for those of us that attended the GMA convention, that was the, that was the theme. Everybody is kind of on a hole waiting for that book. But I feel that some of it can be, which would lessen this even further. But just I want to venture out to say what that amount would be.
The list that you sent, that you sent out, I take it it was the thing that you projected that could fall up under that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That was every item and what we originally started at and how we got to where we are today. Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
Is this the new Lee Street Park that you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Over here.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. And it's, and it's very popular just as a green area. But, you know, we've already got folks requesting when the amphitheater gets built, they're ready to use it. So.
I reached out to some of my fiscally tight friends to help me get right with this thing. And they said it's a legacy project. It's a 50-year project, so.
And we're going to have scenarios in this park?
Yes, sir. If you look at sort of the left side over here, that's Central Avenue. And again, imagine this with the perimeter of the park will be surrounded with, with fencing, which is the decorative metal fencing with, I think every eight, 10 feet, there'll be a brick pillar that connects the brick together. And so the entrances will be when you come on around here on Lee Street, where you see the number nine there, number seven, that's Lee Street. And that's where you'll actually enter the park. There'll be three openings to enter the park, but you can't see that now because the fence is just that flat, black line there. Then in the center, the center entrance will be an archway. If you've seen in the city of Hayhaw and looked at the railroad depot part they have, there's going to be something similar, but not quite as massive and big as that would be. So and then, and then that area, when you go in that entrance where you see it, the gray circle there, that's the splash pad. There'll be benches, landscaping, all that type of thing, all situated throughout, throughout the park. They're also, the one end, the central end's more of a passive part, just come out, eat your lunch, read a book. Then you see the green center, number five, that's the Christmas tree stand where we'll do our Christmas celebrations each year. And then past that, you'll see more of the amphitheater areas more open so folks will bring their chairs and enjoy concerts and shows.
We would have a lot of lighting, right?
Lighting would be all through the pathways, meandered through the pathway. Yes, ma'am.
Mark, is there, is there, I'm sorry, you can't see. Is there an area behind, the area behind the amphitheater?
Mm-hmm.
It looks like a concrete pad or something?
Right.
Is there, is that loading and unloading area?
Absolutely right.
There's a, there's access through the fence or a gate or something?
If you see the building, number three is the restroom. And you see on the walkway it says eight right there?
Yeah.
That would be an inner, where bands would enter, unload their equipment and go back to the back of the building. That's correct.
Now, can vehicles like a box truck or something drive back there?
Yep. We kind of planned for that because that would be the only entrance. Like if you, if you recall, the church has put up a, a, eight foot, I believe, vinyl fence around. And we're just on the backside of that, of that unloading pad there, we're going to just join them because, you know, none of them will respect the church and we never want to do anything that would harm what they've already done there because they've done a fantastic job. So we're just going to connect on and finish on around with a white vinyl fence on that side. So the fence I'm referring to again is just Lee Street and Central. But yeah, that will be made to hold heavier trucks, some cars that need to unload.
Thank you.
How soon can we start on it?
Well, if, if it is approved tonight, they're sitting on ready to go.
Counsel, any more questions for Mark on this project? Mark, thank you.
You looking for us to make a move? How much money?
Not to exceed two million, nine ninety five, nine eighty three. And then if it's your preference, to include the twenty thousand dollars as a contingency for anything else that, that the market is volatile.
Mark, that's actually written in, two nine seven five, the total contribution.
Yeah, so I'll just add the two together, but.
Any further questions?
The important about it is including the.
Well, the, the total with the twenty thousand would be two million, nine seventy five, nine eighty three. But for the motion, if there's one to be made, I think we need to break it apart just so it's clear that twenty thousand is contingency and the not to exceed price is two million, nine ninety five, nine eighty three. Makes it more clear for our minutes.
Mark, thank you.
And Mark, this splash, this splash.
It's Splosst eight. Yes, sir.
Counsel, I'll turn it over to you for a very precise action.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the not to exceed costs submitted by Artesian Construction in the amount of two hundred nine, two million, nine hundred seventy five thousand, nine hundred eighty three dollars, plus the twenty thousand dollars contingency fee for steel, steel price increase if needed, for a total amount of two million, nine hundred ninety five thousand, nine hundred and eighty three dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Well done, Sandra. All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Well, now move on to the citizens to be heard portion of the evening. We ask that you come forward and state your name and address so we may have it for our record. Policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole and do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It is this council's policy to immediately follow through with you and your concern after the meeting. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson. Again, this will ensure all have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens to be heard? Please step forward and state your name and address.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sally Turner Aquarian, 1120 North Lake Shore Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. I would like to thank the council for listening to the citizens of Valdosta and voting to deny their request to deannex the 310 acres. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening. I believe that this is an important piece of property that council needs to continue to monitor the land use for the following reasons. This land, this thing's, okay, this land rests above one of the nineteen principal aquifers in the United States. This aquifer called the Floridian Aquifer supplies drinking water to 10 million people in the southeast United States. The quality of this water is considered among the best in the nation. This water is important to the economics of Georgia and our community because it plays a critical role in areas of agriculture, recreation, and human consumption. The absence, the reasons to, more reasons to protect it, the absence of an upper confining layer of rock as protection and the presence of karst features such as sinkholes make the aquifer vulnerable to contamination from human activities. Any alteration of groundwater flow can change the geochemical conditions, chemical makeup of the water, and increase groundwater vulnerability to contamination. Dropping water levels from overuse means wells for agriculture and rural businesses must be deeper and more costly. Almost all of the property is in high-risk flood zone, and it should remain undisturbed and continue to play a passive role until it plays a critical role, active role, as flood abatement. So I just want you to consider these. Y'all keep an eye on the property. It's a very important, that Floridian Aquifer is one, we've got aquifers that are drying up across the United States. And then just to add about the steel, there is a new product called compressed pine, which is as strong as steel, that's being used in construction in different places across the United States. And I would just suggest that since it is made with pine, that, you know, the Langdells might get involved and y'all might want to look into it. So thank you very much.
Sally, thank you. Are there any other, any other citizens to be heard? State your name, please.
Samantha Matthews. I'm at four zero six nine Conway Circle. Mayor, council, and city manager, congratulations on a great project. We know for well at the Turner Center how popular the events are outside in, in the park and in nature. So congratulations. I think that we have a community that is just more than excited to get out and do some community events. I just applaud you for that. Before you, you have a copy of our strategic plan. I wanted you to just look at that and see where your Turner Center for the Arts is going. I have given you a copy of it so that you can look through it and see what our accomplishments have been the last several years and then what goals we have coming up for the next five years. So this has taken us through 2026. It's a great read. It's really quick, too. So please take a look at it. And if you go to the back page where you see the leadership, these are the people in our community that make the Turner Center for the Arts go. These are our board members. These are our staff members. And they're the people that are really doing a fantastic job for your community. Attached to that, you'll see these two red tickets. And we're happy to launch our score concert series. It's a score classical music appreciation program. There's four concerts coming up. And the first one is, I'll just let you look at that because I only have three minutes. But if you have any questions, I've given you two complimentary, complimentary season passes. So please come and enjoy classical music. It's something that you don't see a whole lot of. You see a lot of bands playing and all, but we taking you back to some great trumpets and violinists and classic pianists all the way from Paris, France. It's by, it's through a grant, the National Department for the Arts and a local match. So it's wonderful. And we're bringing every fifth grader in the city of Valdosta City Schools through our campus so that they can experience classical music. And then that way, when they get to the sixth grade, they can actually choose the strings program instead of just everybody going to the band, which is not a bad thing. Out of my last 48 seconds, I want to, I also gave you a copy of this art of writing anthology. We started a program for young people in our community. It's a writing program, the Young Writers League. And this year, the first year, we also had a contest. And it was called the Art of Writing Contest with the theme Living United. So let me just say that this is the collection of the winners in that program. The whole purpose of starting the Writers League, this Young Writers League, is so that kids can express themselves in crazy times like COVID, but also so that they can engage in civic conversation. So Living United brought some really fantastic essays and they're, they are collected in here. They're the winners in here. But please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you for supporting the Turner Center for the Arts. Any questions?
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you for the tickets. Thank you for.
You are very welcome. Thank you for your continued support.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? State your name, sir.
Happy to, Mr. Mayor. J. E. Rice, 501 Nob Hill Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. I think this is going to probably be my last time addressing the council in regards to this issue of renaming the Park Avenue to Citizens Center after Mrs. Roof Kate Council. I want to first thank city manager, Mr. Mark Barber, for corresponding with me on the events that occurred this past Tuesday night at the work session of council. I am a little perplexed as to the meaning of what was stated. In the, in the email, Mr. Barber said that council discussed the work session. And after the discussion, the council made decision not to amend the current policy. I, along with the 100 other people who signed a petition to have that building named for Mrs. Council, was not asking for the policy to be amended. I was just asking that council follow their own policy and be consistent. There have been other streets, facilities named after people that were, that were living. The first one that I know of was Dexter Sharper had the street in front of his house changed to Sharper Circle. And then Mrs. Council had a street name for her, a one block long street name for her. County Commissioner Amy Martin had a street name for her. Former President Barack Obama had a street name for him. Of those that are, that are mentioned, of course, Mrs. Martin and Mrs. Hunter are no longer with us, but they were, they were with us when that renaming was done. I'm not sure about Mrs. Hunter, but Councilman Vickers could probably correct me if I'm wrong whether she was deceased or not when the Major Hunter Center was named for her. So it's not unprecedented for the request to name a facility after someone who's still alive. The policy does say that council may. The policy does say that council may name, rename a facility for historic purposes, and I think there's nothing more historic than to give honor to Mrs. Council, who was the first person of color to be elected to Valsley City Council, along with the other accolades that she received, not only from the state of Georgia as an educator, but as a citizen of our city, mainly helping start the Martin Luther King Commemorative Committee, which is a historic event in itself in Valdosta. So I hope we can get closure behind this. I wish council would reconsider that, that discussion that was held Tuesday night, and go ahead and move forward and name that facility as, after Mrs. Hunter, I mean, Mrs. Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Are there any other citizens to be heard at this time? State your name, sir.
What's up, everyone? My first name is Ronnie Pierce. I currently reside at 823 Volotan Drive in the great city of Valdosta, Georgia. I currently, I purchased a home about 15 years ago on Volotan Drive, and when I purchased that home, I would think that 15 years ago, probably 80% of the people who lived on that street were white. Okay? 15 years later, the table has turned, and now it's probably 80, 85% black, that people who live on my street. I take pride in my street. I take pride in my city. I'm one of those people who use the app that you all have to report city violations. I use it quite often, especially with the houses around me. One of my major complaints is trash cans left outside, pickup is on Tuesday, trash cans out there Thursday, Friday, overgrown grass and so forth. I have discovered through my observation that my street is coming into a blighted area. I wouldn't necessarily call it a slum, but it's definitely turning into a blighted area. And I say that because now it'd be, I counted the number of houses from Steelwater coming down Volotan to Troop Street, and there are 60 houses there. Also, I did a survey, and I went from house to house to find out how many of those people were homeowners and how many of those people were renters. It turned out to be about 60% of the people who live there now are renters. The problem that I'm having is I don't have anything against renters. I've never rented anything in my life except for a car to go from here to Atlanta. But the problem with people coming from situations where they don't have the proper equipment to take care of their lawn is that it gets overgrown. And I'm particular about the grass in my yard and maintaining it and so forth, and it hurts me to actually see, you know, the, the, the lawns in such bad shape. I would like you all to possibly consider, since the, the renters who are coming in are primarily apartment dwellers, I'm asking the city to consider having a restriction or a restriction or law or, whatever you want to call it, that if somebody rents a house out, that the, that the owner of the property makes some kind of arrangements, either an increase in their rent so that the owner can cut the grass, but cut the grass on a regular basis. And it's getting to a point in my, in my neighborhood where it's really, really getting out of control.
Ronnie, thank you. We'll follow up with you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Are there any other citizens to be heard at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marie Young. I live at 507 West Adele Street. I stay on the corner of Third Avenue and Adele Street. That's between Yawk Street and Third Street. When the water passed the stop sign on Yawk Street, about 30 feet, it turns and it come through my yard, and it goes through the back and through the front. And it done, did it so long until it's done washed down to the clay. And in the back, the sand done washed out in the road in its roots back there, and I had a guy to throw the sand back up in the backyard, but the other night, the sand washed back in the road. So the, the water in the front, it comes to my front door, so I had the guy to put some cement there so I can get out the door. So I called the city, because it was right there by the stop sign, I called the city and asked the city could they help me any kind of way. The city said, yes, they come out and put some rocks about the size of your finger there, but the rocks, three times, they done did it, and the rocks now washed down, down the road to the water that's in the, I mean, to the sand that's in the road back there. And I'm just asking y'all to help me some kind of way with this problem that I'm having.
Marie, hang tight after the meeting, and somebody will approach you on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Good evening.
I can.
Yes, you can.
Good evening.
It's state your name and address.
My name is Nalita Menefee, also known as Creation Divine. I'm here on behalf of Hype, Inc. at 98 Garden Drive, Valdosta, Georgia, 31602. And again, good evening, mayor, city manager, and the city council members. I'm coming to you because I believe that we share a common interest, promoting the well-being of young lives. It is our sincere desire to promote youth and provide the opportunity for them to utilize and display their artistic as well as athletic talents. You are a forward thinker who's looking toward the future and making decisions today that will positively impact tomorrow. I would like you, to invite you to partner with Hype, Inc. as a city sponsor. Hype is a grassroots nonprofit organization in Valdosta, Georgia. The mission is to promote the well-being of young lives. Our objective is to enlighten youth and enrich their character. We accomplish this through instruction in the arts, sports, mentoring, education, and youth leadership development. There are currently four programs that Hype has implemented to manage the activities that we, and the events that we provide, which are Hype Arts, Hype Sports, Kids Night Out, Saturday Night Hype, and we are in the process of launching an all-city, take this, an all-city youth orchestra and performing arts program. Our future, we have currently leased a facility, 7,200 square feet, that will serve as a centralized location for most, if not all, of our programs. We would like to purchase vehicles that would be used to assist parents and transplanting youth to and from our programs, also those children whose parents have financial limitations. We would like to offer full scholarships that will contribute, that, and your sponsorship would contribute directly to that. We are, have, we are wanting to know if there is funding available that the city has gotten from federal or state agencies that will assist a program like Hype in moving forward and being able to accomplish our goals. And so I'm here today to see what we need to do if there is, what's the process and procedure, you know, how would we find out more about monies and finances that are in the city to provoke, promote and to help with performing arts programs.
Nalita, thank you. Somebody will follow up with you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for what you do. Are there any other citizens to be heard? I'll try and stall because the next part of the night is the city manager's report, and he's doing just what we hoped, and actively engaging citizens.
All right. I will keep my comments brief, this evening, mayor and council. I'm just, so you're going to get this on your calendar. We'll be having memorial ceremony on Friday, September 10th, at 10:15 at the courthouse that will pay tribute to those who lost their lives during the attacks on 9/11. Another feature this year will be that New Air Force Base will participate in the flyover following the ceremony. The ceremony will be, will be live streamed on our Facebook, and of course, we encourage everyone to be masked and follow those social distancing criteria. And then for the following day on September 11th, the Valdosta Fire Department is hosting a 9/11 Memorial 5K Run that will start at 7:59, and that's, that's important because that's the time of the first plane was taken over on 9/11. So following the race, they'll have a brief wreath laying ceremony on the fire trucks before the awards ceremony begins, and this will be held at the Mackey Street parking lot across from City Hall. I'd be interested to have, answer any other questions you may have this evening.
Can we do a fast walk?
You can do a fast walk. Chief Butler will take you, whatever he can, he'll take a fast walk or a slow walk.
You got one hour.
He will push you, Miss Vivian, if he had to.
I can run, but I'd like to do a fast walk.
Can we ride on the back of the truck?
Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Before I turn it over to council comments, a couple of quick notes. Obviously, the food truck event is already underway tonight across our downtown. I believe there's more than a dozen food trucks out there. Please, please take part in that wonderful event. Also, coming up next Saturday, a week from this Saturday, a COVID-19 drive-through vaccine clinic is going to be held absolutely free of charge. It's going to be on Hill Avenue at the Union Cathedral Church. I love those people. Thank you for bringing that to me, Eric. Please get out and please encourage your friends and neighbors to get vaccinated, people who did not have this last go-round. Everything that we did that first go-round almost sounds primitive now, knowing that there's a vaccine out there. So I encourage all citizens to get vaccinated, and thank you for that effort. And one last thing, all of us have enjoyed a young lady named Angela Hobby, who has worked for many years out at Wiregrass, Georgia Technical College. She is having a retirement party over at Georgia Beer Company tonight, too, so if you're out for the food trucks, please stop by and thank her for great service to this community and our industry and our business as well. And I turn it over to council for comments. Counsel?
Tomorrow also, we have a, I can't think of the barber shop, but it's on, on.
Doug?
The Street. So you should announce that he's doing it also tomorrow.
I wish I had, I wish I had Mr. Doug's address, but I, but yes, he's doing.
Well, you run out at the tag office. You know, you do come through the drive-through, there, his office is there. So we shouldn't just advertise one and don't recognize.
And he's done it many times over, too, so thank, thank him for that. As a matter of fact, I have thanked him on Facebook for that effort, too. I should have done it here.
I would like to say, I would like to thank, well, the citizens on South Lee Street were very thankful to our engineering department and all those who were involved in getting that sidewalk. They have asked, what can they do to show some appreciation to the city for it, because it's something they have been asking for, for a long time? I told them they can write a letter, they could write a card or something like that. So I told them I would mention it and see if it was anything, but I do want everybody to know that it's been something that citizens have been looking for, asking for, for a long time, and they are very thankful for it. It looks nice, it's given them a lot to talk about. I mean, they're walking on the sidewalk a lot there. And I want to thank engineering department so very much for that. And if there's anything that they can do to just to show their appreciation, maybe they all come up in and take a picture, do something like, that's what they've been telling me to do.
We should.
It is thankful for it, and we really appreciate all that.
Counselor, thank you. Any further comments?
All right. Just one quick announcement. The Miracle League of Valdosta begins next month, September 14th, for kids with disabilities at Freedom Park. So if you know anybody that wants to volunteer, participate, and give for adults with disabilities that want to be part of it, have them to reach out to me or one of the board members.
Kickball and?
Kickball and baseball, so it's $35 for eight weeks, four weeks kickball, four weeks baseball. It's one fee, $35.
Councilman Dick. Any further comments? Councilman Vickers, take it away.
I'm just now, we'll be dismissed.
All in favor, show of hands.
I can't.
Thank you, counsel.
Ay, 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 ay.